Okay, so what I'll do is I'll get that.
No, no, we can wait until we get down here.
Okay, okay. Good afternoon, everybody. Today is June 26, 2025. It is approximately 12:04. If we could open a prayer, sir, if you'd open us a prayer?
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day. We just ask you to watch over our country, Heavenly Father, and protect all of our residents here in the township. Lord, give this board your mind's eye that we would do what you would have best for Franklin Township. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Jim, will you do this at the front?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sir, if I can have a roll call when ready?
Yes, sir. Mr. Leaser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Levins?
Yes.
And Ms. Justice? It's an absolute, okay.
I'm going to pause for a moment. Mr. Stevens, I'm going to bring you up now because I know you have. Yes, and that way we'll get your.
I appreciate that, thank you. Sorry for my appearance down a little bit dirty. Real quick, I just got a, just a couple of updates. Building update, contractors and everything have been set. The plumbers will be in possibly tomorrow painting their lines and everything to get started. Definitely going to be started next week. Hopefully they'll be finished up within the next couple of weeks. Electricians are already working on getting the stuff that they need to go ahead and get the mast and the can and everything put on the side of the building. And we'll be in contact with AEP about getting their stuff brought over to us. Concrete contractor has already been notified and he is ready to go whenever plumbing is done. So everything is actually working along real well. The committee met and we went ahead and agreed on a few things yesterday. Today we're putting the pipe ballards up in front of the doors to protect the doors with all the other equipment and everything is going to be coming in. So unfortunately that's why I got as dirty as I have. Any questions on that?
Do not, anyone else have anything? Do you have anything else for us?
Yes, I do. The only other thing that I really had was the county engineers reached out to me. They will be starting our paving project within the next two weeks. They've already been doing the full depth repairs up on Janatrol and Rosemont and they'll be working down on Forest doing the same thing. So hopefully here within the next couple of weeks. Mr. Malinak said they're going to be starting on our roads. So they'll be getting that wrapped up pretty quick too.
I saw them on Rosemont yesterday.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Other than that, gentlemen, that's all I really have.
You have anything else?
Where are we at on Route 250? How many have we done this year?
We have, let's see, probably, we've probably mowed 18, 19, 20. I know they were out mowing all day yesterday. I don't have the exact number on what day we was able to get to yesterday. I was just in the office this morning doing that and we've got 29 more letters going out now. So it's control.
How many letters have went out? Would you say out of 20, how many people then heaved to it?
We've sent out over almost 100 letters, over 100 letters.
Out of 100 letters, how many this year are we seeing people heave to it and cut their yard versus us?
Once they get the letter.
Yeah.
Yeah, once they get the letter, it seems like, and it's been that way for years where it seems like.
So how many people would you say percentage wise is what I'm asking? If you sent out 100, are we cutting 50? I mean, have you looked at it?
Probably, probably out of the 100 letters, we'd probably move 25.
Okay, so 75% of the people have heaved to it and cut their grass, okay.
One other question, a couple of other questions is when you were going up to deal with the concrete guy?
Yes.
Mr. Fleish, where are we at on that for one? For two, I'm getting both D at the same time. Mr. Fleishman, I believe, asked you to go through there and make a list of all the houses and stuff that needed, with the, like, semis parked and the alleys blocked and all that. I have never seen.
Working with zoning, you're talking about like down off of Plainview, down on the lot, all the way on the right, on the right-hand side? And working with zoning on that?
And the alley that I.
The alley in between Dover and Plainview.
Uh huh.
Yeah, we're working on.
Well, I hadn't heard anything, so. And then what about the gentleman that paved this old front yard there by the party house?
He tore out, he tore out the majority of his concrete and then left like a sidewalk. And I'd already reached out to him and told him that it's not going to work either. I mean, from the road to our right away has to be grass and seeded. And apparently, you know, he tore it out and he left the sidewalk in. But I've got text messages, I've tried to call him. Right now we're at text messages telling him that has to come out too.
I did go by there prior to that and he, one evening, and exactly what we said, it was full of cars. So it was exactly what it was going to be.
I explained it to him that way where it can't have gravel. There can't have gravel because if you have gravel, they're going to park cars there. And I even explained to him, you can't be parking that way, so.
Sure, okay. Anything else for us? Here or none? I'll open the floor if there's any questions for, for the road department. Here or none, I close the floor.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point in time, thank you, sir. I'm going to go back to the agenda. Old business approval of the meeting minutes for June 12, regular business meetings. If there's no further questions on the subject, I'd ask for a second.
I will second the motion to approve the minutes.
Having the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Mr. Leaser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Levins?
Yes.
Okay, next first item up is discussion, firehouse 193.
Yes, sir, I asked that to be put on.
Okay.
So I'm going to need, the two gentlemen's give me a couple of seconds.
Sure.
Two minutes to get to where I'm going. But the reason I wanted to bring this up is I wanted, I didn't feel that I had ample opportunity. No one's fault, my own fault. I should have spoke up when it came to the closing of 193. I thought we were going to have a little bit more discussion, a little bit more involvement. And so I wanted to go back, so I'm going to take it all the way back to the beginning. So on 3/20 of 19, I was, you can go back and check this with the minutes in the township on the website on page five. You'll see where I appear to speak to the board. I was a member of the audience and I spoke to them about the contract in which they were giving to the fire department and wasn't happy as a resident. And I stated then that it wasn't going to work, that they would never be able to be sustainable and it would only cause for levies and things to go higher. And then on 5/18, 2019, page six, I came back in and the contract passed. And I asked Mr. Horn if he had read it before he passed it and he stated no. I asked Mr. Fleishman and he said, no comment. So this is not a disparaging thing on anyone. I just want to get this out there. But in this contract, one of the things that they did, they took their longevity pay. Anybody that doesn't know what longevity pay is, it's like a bonus. You're paying a person to, for being here. It's sort of figured in as it will cost you to train a person and things like that. This is my interpretation of what longevity is. And longevity pay used to be three, four, five, or six, or $700. So the whole entire year for 2017, longevity pay was $12,000. Starting in 18, when they put the new contract in, longevity pay for the fire department went to $29,000 from $12,000 to 29. And it went from 23 employees to 22. And then 2019, it went to $35,000 and 21 employees. And then 2020, it went to $26,000 with 13 employees. And '23, it went to $28,000 with 15 employees. 2022, oh, I'm sorry, can't see it. 2022, it went $44,000 in longevity pay with 13 employees. So what I'm trying to say here is the contract that they passed is basically was not sustainable without the levies going higher. And what happened when I talked to people in my neighborhood and stuff is now they're saying, they're tapping out, they can't pay anymore. It isn't that they don't want their firehouse. The firemen here are great firemen. They deserve the money that they're getting. And I don't blame any fireman who took this. If I'm sitting on that negotiating team and I'm on that side of the table and the place is offering the money, I'm taking the money. Salaries also skyrocketed that year. So now I want to bring you down to when we're negotiating where to put this new building out back here. I know I'm jumping around, so I have worked on this in two different ways. And so on 6/20 of 24, in an open meeting here, it's on a YouTube channel at the 39-minute mark. We were talking about where do we put this new road building? Do we put it on Sullivan Avenue or do we put it here? And James, you said this is where we serve the most of the people, right here. And then at the 59 mark, 59-minute mark of that same meeting, you said, keep it here. It's the biggest share of our township. So I'm not sure that anything's really changed. The only other thing I want to add to that is during the conversations of the road, closing the firehouse, we never took into consideration that less than one mile down the road right here, we have about 2,000 children in school, nine months, five days a week, sitting down here. And we have now put them at jeopardy for a longer run, a longer time to get ambulance and things down there to the school. It never came into play. Also, I feel the run numbers, when I sat and thought about it, I thought to myself, the run numbers can't be right. They can't be that close. So I asked for, and I just got it an hour ago or less, the reason the run numbers are as close as they are between this firehouse and the firehouse on Sullivan Avenue, let's not forget that this firehouse has been shut down. So every day you would calculate runs for the fire department. You would calculate runs for Sullivan Avenue and you would do zero at this firehouse because this firehouse was closed. Do you get what I'm trying to say? It just makes sense. If Sullivan Avenue was open and they were getting runs, 20, 30 runs, whatever it is, I don't know the number, I haven't been able to get into it, Franklin, or Frank Road would have a zero. So I think those numbers are skewed. And the last thing I'd like to say, we had that meeting on Tuesday night. And when that meeting ended, the fire chief came up to me at the end of the meeting and these are his words, full disclosure. He wanted me to know. And I said, okay, what's going on? He said, if the trustees vote to keep this firehouse open, the fire department's filing a grievance and they're not going to work over there. So that was what we were left with. So I said to him, did you contact the other two trustees and do they know? And he said John knew and that he would reach out to James. I'm not going to say for them whether or not this entered into their decision, but I know it didn't enter into my decision. I'm not trying to, we're not going to sit here and debate to change what the decision has been made. I just wanted the opportunity to speak how I feel about it. The people in the township deserve to know that I did put more thought into it than to go into an executive session and come out and then just vote. I should have spoke up. I should have spoke up right then and got this stuff off my chest then. It could have made a difference. It may not have made a difference, but I wanted to do it now and to say that I'm not, I represent the whole township. I represent the northern end, they call it and everything. I take calls and money back constantly. I go over to Hungaro and Broadlon and the Rosary Edition. And I also go over to Havenwood and I know it has a different name now and everything. I'm the one that found all that trash and everything. I spent days over there, going through there and stuff. So I just wanted the opportunity to put that on the record and I appreciate you guys and any comments you want to make. I'm happy to sit here and be quiet and listen.
Okay, you can call it?
I'm good.
Okay, discussion about the insurance.
I also put that on the agenda. I'm curious if the board has any desire to check out on where we're at on the insurance. We had those people, those brokers come in and speak to us and they said we should have been going to market by July and we're getting ready to head into July right now. I just want you to know just for one thing, that I ran the figures just to cover the fire department with all their insurance for the one year for the fire department as they sit here, now is over a million dollars to cover the fire department as it sits today.
So we did have the people in and Mr. Mazer, where are we at with? We had discussion when they were here. It seemed like a really sharp company. They had it broke down to exactly when you need to have meetings, so.
Again, and I asked the trustees which company they would prefer, the one that we have now or the new company. And the feedback I got was, let's continue with the agency we have now. We are working with them. We are looking at probably September to have some final figures for insurance. And they understand we're under the gun because we have these two contracts that we need to start negotiating this year. And we cannot have what we had last year where we're in December. And we're trying to figure out what the insurance premium is going to be. So they appreciate the fact that we need those figures sooner than later. So we have been promised September.
So did the company we're currently using aware that we even shop for another company? Because the company came out and gave a, the two gentlemen that came out seemed very sharp company.
They are aware. The issue I had with the second company is they didn't do what we asked them to do.
Okay.
They presented a completely different package than the two discussions I had with them prior to their presentation and it was not what we wanted.
Okay.
So I'm going to take from that that we're now going to go to market in September? I, my understanding is we should be in market before September so we have an actual product in hand in September. And again, as you trustees know, what I need, what we need is more than one product. And I call it the good, the bad, and the ugly insurance.
Sure.
Because we have a premium that these unions negotiate that we need to stay within. So that's, that's the impetus of having three different policies to offer the employees. I guess I'll say that if you'd spoke to Brian Lenzow to see if we're okay with form fire as it sits right now, we've had some time in between. Do we need to update the form fire? Because I don't want that to become an issue because getting people around here to do anything like fill out form fires like pulling teeth. I haven't spoken to him directly, but from channels within the office that have spoken with Brian, we should be good with the existing form fire.
Okay.
The only thing that we need to change is of course any employees that have been added since we did the last form fire application.
Right.
And.
I just wanted to get.
Worst case scenario is we would just have to go in and update it.
I'm just making sure what happened last year on my first year isn't going to happen this year because I'm here now.
And I think we have two new police officers, one, I know one. So yeah, that would be it. Any new employees, they would have to go and do the form fire. That's it on medical for me, sir.
Okay, no problem. I happened to see that and I had the same concern, which, you know, when they were out here, they gave the timeline for us. Update regarding the township audit.
That would be me, sir.
Okay.
So I just wanted to make sure everybody knows where we're at with the audit. The audit is coming to an end and I think it's germane for people to know how much this township has spent out on the audit. And to date, we've spent $382,668.17 on an audit. And so the audit is supposed to be out by the end of July. And I want to encourage every person that can hear me or see me to take the time to get yourself a copy of the audit or go through the audit. It's going to be very important with everything that we have coming up at the, in the year. And I guess that's all I'll really say right now about the audit. I think there'll be an opportunity later on in the meeting to speak on it further. So I just wanted to bring the public up to date.
Okay. Sir, you want to bring up with Kidwell before I go to the public comments and et cetera?
Yeah, I thought we could do Matt's presentation and Patty Spencer. Then get that out of the way in case Matt has to get back on duty or. David, give me one second, I'll think through here and I'll find the resolution.
How's it going, guys?
Good.
And you?
I'm great.
Stayin' cool.
I worry about you guys with all that stuff on and everything.
Oh, man. That's why we got these, we got these.
David, have your award?
I have working.
Do you have his award?
Yes, David.
Okay.
You want to read this or you want me to read this? Those are the facts of the day.
Okay. Let me read that first and I'll do the resolution.
My gosh.
I saw that video too.
Yeah.
On June 1st, the Franklin County Sheriff's Office received a 911 call about a woman choking at 3441 Maple Shade Court. Officer Kidwell was first on the scene and found the victim unresponsive on the living room floor after choking on roast beef. Recognizing the urgency, he quickly removed her dentures and manually cleared her airway, successfully dislodging the food within two minutes. While her breathing improved, she remained unresponsive until fire and EMS arrived to assist. Today, we honor Officer Kidwell with the Life Saving Award for his quick and courageous actions that day. So trustees, I have a resolution for Officer Kidwell. And it's Resolution 2025-096. It's a resolution awarding the Life Saving Award to Officer Kidwell for his actions on June 1st, 2025. Whereas Franklin Township is committed to recognizing acts of exceptional bravery and service by members of its safety departments. And whereas on June 1, 2025, Officer Kidwell responded with exemplary courage to a critical emergency situation within the township. And Officer Kidwell performed life-saving interventions directly resulting in the preservation of human life. And these actions reflect the highest standards of professional conduct and bring great honor to the Franklin Township Police Department and the community it serves. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, on this 26th day of June, 2025, that one Officer Kidwell is hereby granted the Life Saving Medal in recognition of the distinguished and decisive action on June 1, 2025. This awarding combination shall be recorded in both public record and Officer Kidwell's official personnel file. The township expresses its deepest appreciation and gratitude to Officer Kidwell for his dedication, bravery, and exemplary service to the community. Passed this day, the 26th day of June, 2025, by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, which will take effect in accordance with the Ohio Revised Code, Section 504.11. David, if you would like to do the honors, if the trustees would like to.
We would like to. You want to get back there?
Go back here.
I'd like to see all this have a part of it.
You can? Do you want to do that right now or quickly or wait?
Yeah, you gotta know, if you've watched this video, he probably pulled out a pound of roast beef out of this woman's throat. I'm serious. It's unbelievable what he did. Officer Kidwell, I'd like to present you with the Life Saving Award. And you've always been a very exemplary employee for Franklin Township Police Department. And I hope you take that with honor.
Thank you, sir.
He has a ribbon. I get, I'm getting this card.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, you want to say anything?
No, I, I take this with honor and I appreciate the opportunity. Oh, my God. I did, I just took my turn. No, I appreciate this, I really do. I'm glad I was able to get there and do what I was trained to do and jump right in and save her life.
Sure.
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
We need to pass it. I'll come back up later, right? Yes.
Love you, buddy.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you. All right, yes, we just, that's perfect, thank you.
There's a resolution for this, sir?
Yes, we just read the resolution, so I just didn't ask.
Okay, so here in the resolution, if there's no further question, I'd ask for a second.
I will, sir.
Thank you.
Having the second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Mr. Leaser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Levins?
Yes.
So no sheriff today?
I see none.
I'm sorry?
I said I see none.
Okay. Patty Spencer with Southwestern Area Commission?
Afternoon, everybody. How's everybody doing?
Stayin' pretty.
I only have one thing today. At our July 8th meeting, we are going to have a applicant come before us for 1691 Dire Road. They want to, I gotta read this, to, they're coming before us. It's 2.93 acres to allow two single unit dwellings on the one lot. And it's right now rural district, so that's really all I have. If anyone's interested in coming to the meeting, you're more than welcome.
Okay, and that again, address again is?
1691 Dire Road.
Okay.
It's just, it's between, it looks like it's just east of Lazar.
Okay, and that's right now, what is there now? Is there a single dwelling they're going to tear down and put?
There's, to my knowledge, there was nothing sitting on the plot of land.
Okay, okay.
I hadn't seen anything other than just a bunch of trees when I looked. No, I'm mistaken, there are dwellings already on it.
Okay.
But they have since, to my knowledge, because I've seen some chatter on some of the social media, they're bulldozing over there. What are they bulldozing? Why are they bulldozing?
So taking down the dwellings to prepare it for?
Yes.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Okay. At this time, I'll open the floor if there's any questions for Patty Spencer. Here or none, I will close the floor, thank you. At this time, sir, we'll go to the, is there any comments, questions from the public? Do you have any?
There is none.
There is none, okay. Moving on to Lieutenant Ratliff, you're up next, sir. Welcome, boys.
That was a pretty quick time. One, I'd like to, 100% express to my guys, because I'm sure they may watch the video, that not only Matt is not only a good officer and does an amazing job, I have 13, well, 12, because I'm part of the 13 amazing police officers that go out there and do a really good job. And I want them to know, I feel that way.
Sure.
Okay, so I got a couple of things here. Separate this out here, there's your stats for you. First off. Start emailing this to us. Okay. For, these are calls for service as of June 25th of 2025, which we've had 968 calls so far. 13 assistance other units, 35 domestics, nine burglaries, three dog bites, 75 auto crashes, eight fireworks complaints, one robbery, one stabbing, one person with a gun, 13 stolen vehicles, three recovered, eight suicide attempts, six vandalisms, seven threats of harassment, 71 alarms that we responded to, five assaults, 152. of harassment, 71 alarms that we responded to, five assaults, 152 suspicious persons and vehicles, three missing persons, 35 thefts, 11 juvenile complaints, eight fights, 10 under the influence of alcohol calls, and 13 ATV many bike complaints that we get in the neighborhoods.
Sure.
Okay.
Have we had any many impounds as far as the ATVs?
They have been told. I don't have this, this, have, know exactly right now. They have been told, and everybody needs to know out there, if it doesn't have a tag on it, it's going to be impounded if it's on the road. We're coming into fireworks. Yeah, I just wanted to point that out, that there is like one day or three days that you're allowed to use fireworks, the 3rd through the 5th. That's it. So if you're going to be using fireworks, it needs to be careful, supervised, and, you know, completely during those times and only those times in Ohio. Okay?
So is, what is our noise ordinance go through from, is it 11 P to 7, 8?
No, we don't have a timeframe on the noise ordinance. It's 24 hours. So during this time, because Ohio is.
Pretty much, too.
Yeah.
Right. But I mean just our normal?
It's all the time.
Okay.
There's no certain time on our noise ordinance.
Okay.
It basically says it has to be a continuous noise. It can't be like, I made that noise and it's going to make somebody mad.
Gotcha.
But if you got a continuous noise going on, it's bothering you in the neighborhood, call us and we'll come out there and investigate it and look at it anytime during the day. Okay?
Okay.
Speaking of the choking, there are some backpacks that are for, the sheriff department all has them, we kind of wanted to go along with it, that they put in their cars to be able, it's almost like a mask that they put on the people.
Like a plunger?
It is kind of like, just like a plunger, that I'd like to get and put in all the cars. It's going to cost us about $1,500 through par, and I can use it. I have a $10,000 line that I haven't even touched yet.
15, can you say how much for each one?
1,500 for all.
Oh, okay.
Oh, 15 packs.
Gotcha.
And I got a line through par that has a $10,000, that I got $10,000 sitting in there that I haven't even touched yet, that I was going to bring, try to get these purchased for proof. I think it'd be a good idea, especially since we may be responding a little bit more with the fire department being stressed, it might be a good idea.
A lot of people might be wondering, and I'm one, the person that was choking, were they able to call 911?
No. She has a, it's a, it was a.
Blabbering?
No. She, she was an old lady, but she has, I think the person has a disability, but it could be the person was under the influence of drugs. I'm not really sure. But they dialed 911 and it wasn't able to really communicate well, except for that she was choking and it basically hung up. So it's.
I just didn't know if nowadays, if the 911s, you know, obviously, are you choking, press 1 or, you know, push a button.
Yeah.
I didn't know if they had something new.
When you call in, you got to put it in like fire police or whatever.
Right, right.
Yeah, it's kind of weird on that.
Well, I mean, if someone's speaking to you and you can't speak back, is there a man with a gun, push any button on your phone, meaning they're having conversation.
Yeah.
Are you choking? Is that why you can't talk? Push any button on your phone.
B. Text is coming.
Yeah.
We have text coming in here really soon where they can 911 text 911.
Okay.
I know he brought it up, Steve did, about our, you know, we had a donation from the sheriff's department. They got some new equipment. They had some new and old equipment that we have received from them, and I was just going to go through the list of what we actually got, so you have it, but I know you already knew about it.
Okay.
You got, we received 12 ballistic helmets, six riot helmets, two folding ballistic shields, one hard ballistic shield, which is rifle rated, and we got three roll-up ballistic shields for cars. So let's just, the sheriff's department.
What would you estimate if we had to purchase all that? Would that have been?
It would have cost us over $20,000.
Uh-huh.
And they've already been issued out to the guys and stuff, so they're in the cars.
Mr. Weiser has a resolution.
Okay.
If you want me to do that now, I'll wait till days.
I'm sorry.
No, no, you finish. You finish.
I put an email out just for you guys to look over something for traffic, for traffic initiation over the summer, and I wanted to make sure you guys, I sent it out to you, but also wanted you to know where we were standing with my overtime at the time before I asked for you guys to vote on or to decide. Right now for the year, I've used about 17 and a half percent of my overtime. I get $70,000, I got $70,000 appropriation there, and so far we've spent $12,204. So we can afford to put this on, and I think it would be good for the public since school is out and we're getting complaints about ATVs and we're also getting speed complaints. It might be a good idea to offer the overtime to the officers that work special duty, I mean, that work just traffic.
Sure.
So we need to do resolutions for that.
Yeah. I didn't know if you wanted to do that now or if you wanted to look at it and then get back. Oh, here you can pass this one. This is a copy of.
We will do the resolution at the next meeting.
Okay. So if I, what it would be is 16 hours a week of overtime offered. That doesn't mean it's always going to get covered, but to be able to offer that in varying times, and the anticipated cost, we don't know what the cost is going to be. It depends on if somebody works the full overtime, but if they do, labor's at about $959, the fringe benefit is $267 each time. Fuel cost is right around $47. We're aiming high for these 16 hours, okay? And then the total weekly cost should cost right around $1,200 or $1,264, right in that area to run that overtime for a traffic car.
Okay. And do you have an idea of what area for the traffic car at this time, or you're going to assess that later?
Well, we get speed complaints, so, you know, a lot of times we send up, we put our speed trailers out there, which is data trailers. They give us the dates and times that we have our major problems and what time we have the speeders. I could work that, use that to get cars out there during the time that the speeds are happening, and also have them proactively driving around in certain areas, changing where they're going.
Sure.
Yeah. We have an area where they go work traffic.
We don't have an exact area at this time until we look at the data correct.
Yeah, I'd be welcome for anybody, you know, if somebody's listening and that they had, they're having problems if this is approved, and they're having problems, well, still, you let us know if they have problems, but where you want us to, you know, pinpoint our traffic enforcement, I got not a problem, to, you know, help you out, get these cars slowing down in your neighborhoods. They don't need to be driving bad in these neighborhoods.
So I wanted to do an initiative a couple of weekends ago, and you couldn't get anybody to do the overtime. I'm thinking it would have some circumstances where people were, happened to be off and stuff like that. So do you get from your men that they're wanting to do this and they're going to take up the overtime?
Yeah, yeah. I got a real unique situation here in, we're getting ready, we've got one guy who just came off of field training and another guy's coming off in two weeks of field training. We will have everybody except for Roger, I don't know how long he's going to be with his in relief, Roger, and then the chief whenever he comes back. Besides that, you know, we're going to have full crew out. We got a lot of our vacations out of the way by this Monday coming up. Our vacations will be, most of the guys have taken most of their major vacations by this. So we'll have a full crew to get out here and do what we got to do.
Okay. So to that aspect, I sent you something and you sent it back to me about how many men were on the shift over this last holiday weekend, and you got back to me, and then we sat here yesterday and had a conversation about it, and you had many people off for various reasons, vacations and different things like that. So with the 4th of July coming up, we're not going to run into the same issues, are we?
No, and that's kind of part of the reason I'd like to get this in place, so I can also have a traffic car. The traffic car, if there's a major run that goes out, he knows that he's got his priorities is going, that overtime is going to be paid for him to go on that serious run that he's going to take care of.
Okay, on a serious run, but he's just not going to be another officer out just patrolling.
And he needs the right tickets.
So we're not going to just have a third person out there patrolling. What he's going to be doing office, or traffic control and what you explained, and then obviously if something breaks, there's a name, a word for it.
Another word.
That he'll have to go to that, but, so I just want to make sure, even if it would fall to where you may have to move your days off because you happen to be off on the weekend with 4th of July falling, all hell's going to break loose with these fireworks and stuff.
Well, they don't dispatch fireworks.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I know they don't. Like people call me and say, you know, this and that and the other, so I have them call the non-emergency number. That's just a waste of time. No one comes. So, but irregardless, that's what I tell people to do, because that's what you told me to have people do. So, and I don't care what they pass about fireworks and stuff like that. People are going to be calling and complaining, and, you know, we do right now, hopefully we'll have a firehouse here and up and running, but, you know, we want to try to control things.
I hope so.
So all I'm trying to say is, is I want to make sure for July 4th weekend, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we have a full police department on the road. You understand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I would even move to being July 3rd, with red light and boom being downtown, so.
And then I have a question on your stats that you gave out. When it says suspicious people and then slash vehicles, so are you guys noticing, because I know in my neighborhood, we have kids walking down nightly and dressed in black with backpacks on, going through cars. I mean, I catch them on my camera all the time and everything like that, so, and it's one, it's your largest number on the list of 152. So is this something we're stressing to them that, I understand if they're on calls, I hear this all the time, they're on calls and they're busy and stuff like that, but, I mean, I just see them when I'm leaving to go to the Y at 4:00 in the morning on my own street.
These stats right here are when we either pick up a suspicious car or person, or we get dispatched. So it could be pickup runs. These are not just dispatch runs. So when we pull up, if we pull up on a suspicious car, it'll be a part of our, you know, our stats. Or if we, you know, pull up on a suspicious person, you know, we have to mark out with them, it becomes part of our stats.
Okay. I guess that answers my question.
As for the officer's safety, marking whether a.
We also had, worked with Franklin County over yesterday, just yesterday, we had Operation Unity. I don't know if you guys have heard about that. And it was targeted towards Franklin Township in our area, and they pretty much stayed in our area, quite a large amount of people, plus three of our car eyesight to it. I'll have the stats next week. They haven't came out yet because it just happened yesterday, just so you know.
Okay. Any other thing for us?
Nope, that's it.
At this time, I'd like to open the floor if there's any questions for lieutenant.
We can't do that yet when you have a resolution.
Okay.
Still never voted. So it's Resolution 2025-092. It's a resolution authorizing the acceptance of tactical gear donated by the Franklin County Sheriff's Office to the Franklin Township Police Department. And be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio approves and authorizes the acceptance of tactical gear donated by the Franklin County Sheriff's Office to the Franklin Township Police Department. And be further resolved that the donations included 12 ballistic helmets, six riot helmets, two folding ballistic shields, one hard ballistic shield, and three roll-up ballistic shields. That all formal actions of the board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board, any of its committees, that resulted in such formal actions were meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions in said resolution, I'd ask for a second. I'll second. And a roll call when ready, sir.
Mr. Weiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. At this time, if there's no other resolutions that I didn't know we were going to take upon, I will open up the floor for any questions to the lieutenant. Hearing none, I'll close the floor. And sir, thank you very much. Okay, so next we have fire department. He's not here. Do we have, Mr. Weiser, do we have anything you need to report?
Uh, no, sir.
Okay. So fire, and then underneath the fire levy update, so that's going to be, anything there? Is that's easier? Sir?
Pardon me?
My question is, is there anything on the fire levy update portion B? Because A says fire department updates.
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so he's not here. Okay, where departments already went, and fiscal department?
I have motion to pay bills. The first one is motion to approve payroll as written. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board makes a motion to approve the employees' payroll for the pay period June 1, 2025 through June 14, 2025, in the amount of $184,637.92. Direct deposit on June 20, 2025, and electronic vouchers are 1648, 2025 through 1732, 2025. And the exhibits are attached for your review.
If there's no further questions, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it, but I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
Since that way we have it on the floor. I'm looking at payment. Trying to see this here, 1599-2025, Keith Faber, state auditor, auditor of state for 1,074.
Mm-hmm.
I'm assuming, which I probably shouldn't, that we're still paying for audit item?
I know the answer to that. I also, I had already called Robin the other day and got an answer. We're paying for a service, so it's a service that you pay to, it's a yearly charge or something. I'm sure she could step up.
Is it a yearly and service line?
I just know that I asked, that struck me at home, and so I called her the day you guys sent this out. That's what, when James read it, I asked the same exact same question. I just don't, I don't know.
Oh, that's in town payroll.
He's doing payroll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry.
Yes, I'll second, I'll second the.
Any other questions in said resolution? Hearing none, I'd ask for a, I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Uh, Mr. Weiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yep.
Uh, okay.
Sorry, it's easy to do.
It's easy to do. The next is motion to approve accounts payable. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. Board makes a motion to approve accounts payable from June 12, 2025, through June 24, 2025, in the amount of $82,273.92. From electronic payment vouchers, 1587, 2025, through 1731, 2025, and warrants, 70786, all through 70787. The exhibit is attached for your review.
If there's no other questions, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second, but I have a question.
Sure.
Burl Cantrell, it looks like, item 1644-2025. Looks like there's three of them there, and they keep, one's 11,345, one's 3598, and one's 599.
Those are all costs related to the purchase of the new zero turn, turn lawnmower.
Okay, thank you. I seen a person's name and I raised a flag for them.
It's Hillary Lonergan.
Okay. Also Jeff Wilczek. Did we bring him back?
Those costs, I'm not exactly sure of. I would, and we can ask Robin to make sure, I would wager those were his time, yeah, from his engagement letter, his last engagement letter. But we can get absolute verification for that if you. But, we can get absolute verification for that if you would like me to ask, um, Robin.
Well, I mean, he hasn't been here for months now, and we're, we're spending $270 on it.
What's the number on that one, James?
That is, um, 1647 dash 2025.
And that could even be time that he spent helping with payroll.
I thought there was, uh, things that went back and forth.
This is when Robin was on vacation.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good then.
Thank you.
Do you want?
I'll get you definitive answer.
With my answer on Keith Faber's thing, that it's a yearly service fee that we pay the auditor's office? If you want me to get verification from?
No, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm just telling you, I did check on it. I didn't see this one. Uh, I, I just overlooked it, Jeff Wilczek, but that would be right when she was on vacation, so it makes sense. I knew he was supposed to help.
I wasn't thinking about him being here and there, but...
That's why there's three of us.
Sure.
After hearing the questions, is there any others? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Okay, but those are for the fiscal.
Administrator?
I have Resolution 2025 dash 088. Approving obligations authorized by the Township Administrator for the period of June 11, 2025, through June 23, 2025. And whereas the Board of Trustees, a Resolution 2021 dash 130, authorize the Township Administrator to approve obligations of $10,000 or less on behalf of the Township in accordance with Section 507.11 of the O R C. In pursuit to the provisions of Section 507.11A of the O R C, all such obligations approved by the Administrator must subsequently be approved by the formal adoption of a resolution by the Board of Trustees. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the obligations authorized by the Township Administrator, as presented in the attached Exhibit A, and made part of this resolution, are hereby formally approved. All formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were conducted in an open meeting of the Board, and all deliberations of the Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal actions were conducted in meetings open to the public in full compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and will be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions in said resolution, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
Having a second, I would ask for a roll call when ready, sir.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Then I have Resolution 2025 dash 089. It's a resolution authorizing payments by the temporary deputy fiscal officer. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approved the appointment of James Stevens to serve as a temporary Franklin Township Deputy Fiscal Officer to fulfill the duties of the fiscal officer in their absence according to Resolution 2025 dash 038. Be further resolved that per Resolution 2025 dash 038, this appointment is temporary and shall be rescinded at the request of the Board of Trustees. Be further resolved that the Board of Trustees grants a temporary deputy fiscal officer the authority to approve and sign vendor invoices totaling the amount of $1,305.76. Check numbers 70786 through 70787. The exhibit is attached. All formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and in all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees, that resulted in such formal action were meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions in said resolution, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
Having the second, I ask for a roll call.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. It's a resolution authorizing the closure of Firehouse Station 193, located at 2193 Frank Road, Columbus, Ohio, 43223. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, approves and authorizes a closing of Firehouse Station 193, located at 2193 Frank Road in Franklin Township. This decision has been based on the failure of leverage rejected by the voters in November 2024 and May 2025. Be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees will at the appropriate time determine the actual closing date of Firehouse Station 193, based on layoffs and employee attrition. That all formal actions of this Board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and in all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees, resolved in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
And a roll call when ready.
Uh, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
No. I mean, yes.
Um...
I get that 193 mixed up.
Mr. Blevins?
No.
Next resolution is Resolution 2025 dash 091. It's a resolution authorizing the change in payroll processing due to the July 4, 2025 holiday. Be resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, approves and authorizes a pay period of June 15, 2025, through June 28, 2025, which employees are scheduled to be paid on Friday, July 4, 2025, shall be finalized and processed by Wednesday, July 2, 2025. Be it further resolved that allowing a payroll specialist to adjust the payroll process to be completed at an earlier date will ensure the employees will receive their paycheck in a timely manner, avoiding a delay due to the holiday. That all formal actions of this Board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and in all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees, resolved in such formal actions were meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no, uh, further question in said resolution, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
Having the second, I ask for a roll call.
Um, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Thank you.
We already did that next one, Steve.
Okay, then the next one I have for you is Resolution 2025 dash 093. It's a resolution approving 96 hours of injury leave for Cornelius Trottin. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves 96 hours of injury leave for firefighters for Cornelius Trottin for the period of 6/15/2025 through 6/28/2025, per Article 33 of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. Be resolved that all formal actions of this Board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and in all deliberations of this Board, any of its committees, resolved in such formal action, were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C.
I have, I'm sorry, go ahead. I thought you were done.
This resolution shall be declared emergency and shall be in full force and effective immediately upon its adoption.
I thought we got an email on this, and I changed mine that I printed out to say 80 hours.
Yes, and that's why we corrected it.
So, is it 80 or 96?
It's 96.
Okay.
And then it'll be 80 for Roger Meyer.
Okay, so I did it to, mine said 96. That was corrected one, and I read it as it was supposed to be 80.
Yeah, we looked at that yesterday and saw where we had those numbers flipped.
Okay, so, if there's, uh, no discussion on said matter, on resolution, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
Having the second, I will ask for a roll call.
Um, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And on both of these, has, has all statutory requirements been met?
Yes, sir. I need to attach a, a document.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then whenever you're ready, sir.
I have Resolution 2025 dash 094. It's a resolution approving 80 hours of injury leave for George R. Myers. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves 80 hours of injury leave for employee George R. Myers for the period of 6/15/2025 through 6/28/2025, per Article 24 of the Employees' Collective Bargaining Agreement. Be resolved that all formal actions of this Board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and in all deliberations of this Board and any of its committees, that resulted in such formal actions were in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the O R C. This resolution shall be declared emergency and shall be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
If there's no further questions in said resolution, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
Having the second, I will now ask for a roll call.
Um, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
And documentation is attached.
Okay.
Regarding his medical.
Thank you.
And while on that subject with George Myers, I believe I just need a motion from the Board. We just assigned Officer Meyer to light duty. We are not sure how long he'll be on light duty until we get more medical information from his physician.
Okay.
But I think I just wanted to make that, uh, the Board aware that he, he is on light duty for a time.
Do you have a motion prepared for us?
I can have that prepared for you, yes.
Or if you would like me to rattle one off?
If you...
Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board agrees on this date that Roger Myers, it's Roger Myers, correct?
George. George, George R. Myers.
Okay, George R. Myers will, uh, be receiving light duty work with Franklin Township into further notice. If there's no further questions in the matter, I'd ask for a second.
Hold a second.
And a roll call when you're ready, sir.
I have a question before we take you.
Yes, sir.
Did you tell me yesterday that he was doing light duty for you yesterday?
Yes.
So, why are we doing this now?
Yeah. We just got all the documentation completed.
But what we're saying is, he was already working.
He was already done. Who authorized that?
Well, that's why I was waiting to get all the paperwork, so I could bring it to the Board.
Okay.
Um, when did we first become aware of this? June... I'd have to get all his, his medical.
It was, uh, two days after the injury. So, since we're on this, I'd like to go back to, uh, the firefighter, Trottin.
Mm-hmm.
Where are we at? Is he anywhere on light duty?
Uh, I talked to the chief about, Chief Arnold, about that, uh, because we received information from B W C about light duty, and at this time, and she said he didn't have any light duty available for him.
But we have light duty here.
We do have light duty here.
Okay. So...
So, I guess the question would be, is for a firefighter, I understand the light duty and what you have and some of the things that they can do for the Fire Department, but on the, Police Department, excuse me, but on the Fire Department side, is there union only related to things that...
Gentlemen, I, I would be more than happy, uh, and I think you, you will probably appreciate this, and I would be very blunt. I would be more than happy to have the gentleman come down here and do light duty.
Okay.
There's work needs to be done, and he's being paid, John.
Yeah, I have no problem with that. I'm just asking a question.
Are they're in a union?
Yeah.
I, if you want to know what he's doing with me right now, I could tell you. I have him marking in service, logging into his, uh, N D T, and our, right now, while we have vacations and stuff going on, these officers are not being sent on reports that can be handled over the phone, and our dispatcher takes the run if they don't need an officer, if there's something like a theft where...
He can take it.
Which is for insurance or something like that. They get his phone, the person's phone number, they assign it to him, he calls them, and he does a full matrix report and assigns it to Detective Bureau at this time.
So, the power is going, is if we would be able to do the same thing here if the Fire Department nature doesn't have anything like that? Could he work with Todd in any paperwork, things of that nature? I mean, I'm all for it.
There's just been discussions here that there's all kinds of work that can be done here. It doesn't matter who does it.
Okay.
Doesn't matter. I heard somebody wanted to know what it is. Doesn't matter what it is. We're being paid. We have things that need to be done. If there's persons being paid, we can have this person do it, and the Township receives the benefit of having the job done. We don't have to pay someone else to do it.
So, I guess, sir, we can leave that if you find being necessary of, um, light duty work that can be done as the administrator?
I, I have, I have no issue with that. My issue is with, with the chain command and cooperation. That's my issue.
Okay.
And that's something that, that we don't need to distrust in a public setting.
So, what I will do then, we have a resolution before us to allow for, uh, light duty, is that correct?
For Roger.
For Roger.
For George Roger.
Right, but also for, um, firefighter, Trottin, um, at our next meeting, we can have a resolution, and the Board will decide if we can, uh, have light duty, and then from there, it would be put into your hands on where we can do, and if, and the chief should be back from vacation. And as the rest of the Board has said, I'm sure there are things that can be done, that anything from mopping the floor, to taking reports, to things of that nature, um, we, you know, that's light duty. So, okay, so, sir, I apologize, we interrupted you. You were at a certain point.
We need a vote for George Meyer.
Sure.
So, Mr. Leeser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
Okay. Let me make one little note here. Okay. And then I have, um, Resolution 2025 dash 095. This is a resolution, again, it's 2025 dash 095. It's a resolution providing supplemental information to the Auditor of State. Whereas the Auditor of State is conducting a... the Auditor of State is conducting an audit for the calendar years 2017, 2018, and 2019, which will refer to as the Audit Period, and whereas the Board of Trustees desires to provide supplemental information related to the audit, and whereas the Board believes that it is in the best interest of the township to provide this supplemental information to the auditor. I will need a motion to accept this, and then I'll continue reading.
So if there's no further question on that, I'd ask for a second for the motion?
I'll second a motion to accept the resolution.
Having heard a second, I'd ask for a roll call when ready.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
No.
All right, I will continue. Section 1 of the proposed legislation, regarding FFR, which is a finding for recovery, FFR Number 2019-031 regarding personal leave for the road superintendent. Section 2, FFR 2019-032, it regards compensatory time payout. Section 3, FFR 2019-041, refers to personal leave. Section 4, the FFR 2019-044, refers again to compensatory time payout. Section 5, FFR 2019-081, refers to unallowed personal leave regarding the Police Department. Section 6, FFR 2019-008, regarding retirement pickup for administrative employees. Section 7, FFR 2019-101, and FFR 2019-103, refers to injury leave. Moving forward, Section 8 refers to special legal counsel for the township, being Brochus, Johnson, and Griggs LLC. It's hereby authorized and instructed to respond to the Auditor's Office on behalf of the township and the Board of Trustees, and that all formal actions of this Board concerning and related to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this Board, and that all deliberations of this Board, any of its committees, have resulted in such formal action or in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force effective upon its adoption.
So if there's no further discussion in the matter?
I have a question.
Okay.
You guys are comfortable without the whole thing being read?
I am.
Yes.
If there's no other questions, I would ask for a second.
I will second it.
Having the second, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
No.
Then I have a bank reconciliation for April 2025, and I need a motion to approve the reconciliation, which I think I forwarded to the trustees a few days ago for your review.
The only question I had was, and I'm just going to say it because I've asked it, there was something scribbled on there, and I take it that it was his signature, even though it was just in a place that, I'm like, what is this? I couldn't read it. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
Okay, so if there's no further questions on the bank reconciliations, I would ask for a second.
I will second it.
Having the second, I would ask for a roll call.
Mr. Leiser?
Yes.
Mr. Fleishman?
Yes.
And Mr. Blevins?
Yes.
I will hand this down in just a second to make this note. Okay. I'm going to have, can we do some of the lines?
These are all. Yeah, but I don't see that, where something was.
Oh, it's the very front page.
Oh, there it is.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we're going this way?
Yeah.
Okay. I have them all down here.
You're fine. I just wanted to wait, Mike, till you got through that document. The next topic I have.
I turned it up.
As you understand, the payroll process, employees actually didn't get paid until Saturday, so I was approached by one of the union reps from the fire department, and his question was, if there are overdraft fees that have been realized by employees, what will the township's position be on reimbursing employees for overdraft fees?
I have seen this in the past where we, and I think that we need to either, one, be stringent and know what dates are coming up for payroll, or at the beginning of the year, we should go ahead and pass a resolution in the future on said dates that the pay will go out sooner. In the past, if we have caused financial harm by someone has direct deposit, and they have automatic payments coming out for their mortgage, i.e., etc., if there is a charge, in the past, the township has reimbursed for that charge, and of course, they show documentation to that.
But, John, to your point here, I would, I partially agree. This incident right here, we have done every, we did everything, I believe Nicole and Robin both worked the holiday to get payroll in, and it was upon the bank, the person's banks not posting it. We did everything on our end to get them paid.
Sure. But what I'm thinking is, sir, what we did not do is because of where the holiday fell, and then it skips, you know, one day for the banks, in the future, if we take in that in consideration and have done the payroll, instead of Thursday, we would have done it on Wednesday, so that that would not have happened.
Wednesday, we weren't going to get it out. There were so many errors in the payroll that we represented.
But we have that option, is what I'm saying, in the future.
I think what we need to do, to be very blunt again, and we've had this discussion over and over and over again, if the payroll is presented and it's not correct, we process it as, and then we'll worry about it the next payroll.
I agree.
I think there has to be an understanding that it's a critical element to the employee, and if we spend Tuesday, Wednesday chasing down department heads to get payroll correct, that's an unnecessary delay.
Okay.
And I will say that there are other large government local entities, that their employees need to get paid till Monday or Tuesday because of the holiday.
So what would be the consensus of the Board, sir? You haven't chimed in?
Well, I feel like we already took care of the part, we moved July the 4th, which is the next holiday coming. We've already passed a resolution to take care of that one, so that one's taken care of. I believe Robin has looked to see if any other ones, did she or did she not have a conversation with you on it?
Yes, we tackled July 4th, first, and I need to talk to how we handle, if there's any issues for Thanksgiving, that being a Thursday. How do we adjust for that?
But as far as what I thought we were discussing, is if someone has an overdraft.
In this current situation.
For this situation, you're, we're discussing here now.
Right, okay.
So I feel that we should step up to the plate. So, I mean, I think they have to document it, it needs to come in and be seen, I'm not going to take people's word, but I mean, we're going to be spending taxpayers' dollars, and if a mistake was made, and we were able to marry up the two pieces of paper that showed that due to something beyond our control happened, that we can, let's see, can we not cross the bridge when it happens? Like, we haven't even got there yet.
Yes, sir.
So no one's presented anything. You said you were approached by someone from one of the unions, correct? So go ahead, man.
I have more concern over the statement that you made. There were so many mistakes, there's no way you could get payroll done on Wednesday? Not with the holiday, piggybacking office, no. It would have been almost impossible.
Well, you, we've had this conversation.
We've had this, yes, a number of times.
I think, I'm not sure if Mike was on the Board then or not. I'm to the point where they can't fill out time cards correctly. It is what it is. If the department heads are signing off on these time cards, and they're wrong, they're the ones who need to be held accountable, along with the employees. And I'll make a motion right now, if you want, to go down that road. This is ridiculous. It takes, it takes Robin three days to do payroll because of mistakes, and this goes clear back, it probably goes back further than this, but it goes clear back to when Nick was here, when my first year in office, we've had these discussions. And it's, it's very simple. You, I don't understand, if you have a department head checking it, they should be checking these time cards every day. How are we getting to this? It's time to hold, I've said it many times, it is time to hold these department heads and these employees accountable for their actions or their inability to act.
So it's.
We can do a motion today, or we can, you can type up, you can get a resolution written, or I can get it written, and we can put it through.
So, sir, going back to where we are right now, so on the overdraft fees that occurred, so at this point, we don't have any, if we see that we have some, can we put it on the next agenda with the resolution to pass or fail?
Absolutely, yes, sir.
Okay, and, sir, you go on?
Yes, just a couple more things. I just received notice from the county that the city of Columbus is in a process of annexing 1.891 acres on Wilson Road. This is the property just north of the old, I guess it was the BP terminal. The terminal is right across the street from where the sign shop is, where the old Buick dealership used to be. If you head south, I may have said north, if you head south, there's a green space that abuts against the fuel terminal, that's the 1.891 acres that the city is looking to annex.
I didn't even realize that, because that was, this goes back to a situation, like, why did we want to take the property next to the fuel station on Wilson Road?
Wilson, yeah.
Is for this, when I was talking about annexing, this is just it. So that is an open area, it's right by, isn't it, would it be right by where they make the concrete, the light actually goes back, or is it back behind the old Regal or Sager Buick?
It's the, it's the property, what he's describing, it's the property just across the red light, Catty Corner from the old Buick.
So that would have been at one time, we talked about the little square area where the movie theater was.
No, it's on the west side of Wilson.
Okay.
And the terminal is to the north, and I think, is there a trailer park south of that?
Yes, okay.
South of that.
There's a flower shop there.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's right in between.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Okay.
There used to be an old flower shop in there.
Yeah, I know what you're talking about now, I was too far up.
It's hard to explain.
And of course, we have no, I would like to, we're just, and this is the amazing part about being annexed, alls we do is say, okay, thank you. I mean, we don't get to vote on it, we don't get to say, well, there's nothing that we can do. So at this point, we were at least notified on this one. So, sir?
It's getting better. We're getting notifications ahead of time.
And then the only last thing I have is concerning the fiscal officer and her attendance.
Okay.
And I didn't know if that was a topic that trustees wanted to discuss.
So, we're aware that August 11th was the last day she walked out the door, that she physically worked in this building, she came back for a quarterly meeting and sat here three months ago, and the date was, I don't have that date. So in between August 11th and today, there has been zero work as far as knowing the budget, preparing the budget, one meeting, which was a requirement, and you ran a meeting, I asked her, she would like to proceed, and she said, in her own words, "You've got this." So she sat here, so there was no interaction. I don't believe if anyone was to ask her any questions as far as where we are on any of the numbers and where we're at, the public has better idea than she does. So there's been lack, no communications whatsoever.
No, John, there has been communication.
Well, there's, I mean, there's emails and text messages to all of us communicating.
When I say communications, I'm talking about her work of communicating and her job title, meaning anything to do with the budgets, anything to do with checks being signed, anything with printing out the bills, anything with the resolutions, those communications have not been there. Yes, you are correct, there has been some communication from her to the Board, but the communication I'm seeing now, a doctor has her off work. I don't know of any other communications as far as constructive, as far as the duty of the job.
You haven't, you've been copied on those emails, asking if there's anything that she needs to come in for. As I stated a couple meetings ago, we did a resolution, and in that resolution, it says that she has to have an appointment to come in. And if we're not giving her an appointment to come in, I mean, how are we gonna?
So, is, but, sir, Mr. Leiser?
Yes, sir.
What is the qualifications as far as her being in the building and working? I know that we, due to the fact of, call it hostile work environment, we said, said resolution that she can work from anywhere, home, she can do anything, and then from that point, we rescinded that, we altered it, I don't have that verbatim in my head. And then from there, she wanted certain items, such as a laptop to work on, things of that nature, we provided, you were gracious enough to say, "Come in when you're ready, come in when you're ready," and it's just been a lack of participation on her part, if I'm not correct. That could be my opinion.
No, 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 there have been, there have been a number of occasions where we've tried to schedule something, and she hasn't been able to make it. I just know from my conversations with our legal counsel, this is something that doesn't fall under my umbrella. I know as an elected official, and I'm just repeating what I have been told, she has a responsibility to the taxpayers. I don't have a responsibility for her. She was elected, she has a seat at the table, she has responsibilities. We have been able to work to continue operating the township, as the Auditor of State has told me, I am not in compliance. The lights are on, people are paid, and the trucks are on the road with gas and diesel fuel. Other than that, I don't have an answer for you, trustees.
Sure, and when you said. Sure, and when you say communications, you are correct. Those communications with us saying, "Come in," and things of that nature, you're correct. There were communications, us inviting her.
There's also communications where she emailed us, asking if there's anything and what time it would be for her to come in, because of the, she's stating the resolution. And I don't remember how the wording was.
And I believe in majority of my communications with her, I ask her to get with the township administrator. And because we don't set up a time or et cetera, we are board members, and the day-to-day operations would be working with Mr. Mazur. Sir, do you have anything on that?
No, I think if James wants to make a resolution to, you seem to think she can't come in this building and work, James?
That's what the, I believe that's what the resolution said.
Okay, so, let's make a resolution and say she should come here starting Monday or whenever she, I do not like to talk about people's medical things. The first time she is able to allow to be to work, let's have her come here and give her full access to everything. I will let you know for a fact, I know you're going to have yourself grievance from your union on this as soon as she comes back. And we bring her back in here and we expect her to be here and do the job. And doing the job means being here at the meetings, and when people have come up to the podium to ask questions, I guess the first thing I would say is, do what you said you was going to do at the last meeting you spoke. You was going to speak to the people and let them know what was going on. So, this would be a good opportunity to do that. So, what's it say, John?
Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees, the Board of Trustees agree with the Resolution 2025-036 that Lindsey Justice shall have access to the administration building at 2193 Frank Road with the intent to attend quarterly meetings, schedule trustees' meetings or as required. Further, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin, well, I added to that, Board of Trustees will afford Lindsey Justice the opportunity to obtain the UAN desktop computer controller by the, controlled by the Ohio Auditor of State from her place of residence. It will be upon Lindsey Justice to schedule times and dates to review and sign partition documents pertaining to documents requirements of the Township Fiscal Officer.
See, that's the portion I'm talking about.
So, it's up to her, it says, it says.
Where's the part that says "as required"?
Right here. Sign.
No, that's this part right here that says that she can come to the meetings or as required. So, she's required to be here, she's allowed to be in the building. But if you look at this, here.
Stop sticking up for it. Yeah, mine are a little gross, still have the job. Thank you. Sorry.
Right here, where it says that she has to schedule a time and dates to review and sign pertinent documents required of the Township Fiscal Office.
So, what do you, what would you like to do?
I don't know.
How would you like to craft this different?
I think that needs to be taken out, because that, that.
Okay.
Add one up that says, "Come to work."
Okay, that's exactly what I was going to say. I'm going to do this, I've got it. Be it resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board rescends any and all resolutions regards to Lindsey Justice. Resolution 2024-130, resolution, this one doesn't have a date, 20, okay, gotcha, 2025-036. Be it resolved this day that Lindsey Justice does her job, come to work. End of story.
Amen.
If there's no further question in it, I'd ask for a second.
I will second.
And what if she doesn't?
At the first available date.
No, I'm just, come to work. I'm not adding dates, I'm not adding anything. Come to work. I'm not getting in her personal stuff, anything of that nature, it's just, just like any other employer. So, I'm making it as simple as can, because I don't want to kick the can around.
That might be what's baffling me.
Yeah.
I just, come to work. The door's open.
So, did you need?
Go ahead.
Well, why don't you do this? Draft it up so it ain't putting you on the spot, and we'll put it, because we know that she's on medical leave, so it's not going to affect anything between now and the next meeting.
Okay.
Would you agree?
Did you have a second?
Make it simple.
Did you ask for a second? Did I miss?
Yeah.
I asked if there's no further questions, so there's, we're in question stage, so there is no second, so we don't have to vote. That's why we, I like that.
Well, that's not the way to, that's not.
I understand, but they can die lack of a second that way as well. So, if it's the pleasure of the Board to wait and craft one that supposedly are more argumentary, I don't know how much more simple we can say is come to work. She has sent the Board, her physician has said that he wants her off work, that's satisfactory, you know? I don't know what more that we can do to make it more simpler than, the door's open, this is the address, you can come to work. So, if you want to craft it, I'd be more than happy to pull this back and not move forward, it's up to you. Me? No.
I'd make a motion that we rescind what you just said.
We didn't get a second, we don't have to rescind something that was a motion.
I did, if you look back.
So, what I will do is, I will rescind my.
Sir, are you okay? Do you want to go forward today? I would make a motion.
Does it now? Thank you, James.
I would make a motion.
I'm listening, sir.
That we table the resolution, John, that you just put forth.
Okay.
And allow it to be typed up with a resolution number until the next meeting. Not changing the wording of it.
Gotcha, okay. So, we'll make it simple. I'll wait till Steve gets back here. So, said resolution to be, is going to be tabled until further notice. Okay? Because I don't even know what the resolution number was.
Yeah.
So, it's tabled. What I will do is, we'll craft something, and then I'll get it to you trustees to edit, review.
And I do agree. Got to get her back in, you're working.
Good luck.
And, sir, do you have something for us?
That's enough, no, sir, I'm finished. I'm finished.
Don't forget. I wanted to ask a question.
I got it, I've got it right down here. I've got it on the bottom here. So, we're coming down, Mr. Mazur, do you have anything for the Board?
No.
I do have one, I spoke with a gentleman on, I believe it was yesterday, very upset about Hague Avenue, and I see Mr. Guyton here, so it was not Mr. Guyton that called me. It was, it seemed to sound like, I don't know his name, I didn't ask, I listened, the amount of dust, the construction, and the things that are going on. So, I explained to him that it was in Franklin County, he and I spoke to who he has spoke to. I didn't have any real answers, because I have no authority other than I can make the same phone calls that he made. I did tell him that it's, sounds like a good news story, because sometimes you get people's attention when they see their project on the news.
He loved the media.
I said for him. I don't know if anyone else has got any calls in regards to that, but evidently, you know, we had a fatality where, you know, somebody had went around the signs and obviously went into a ditch that was fairly deep.
I have no idea how they went through the signs, because I've been up there.
So, what I would like to do, Mr. Guyton, I don't want to put you on the spot, would you like to say anything, and you live right there, would you like to comment on the phone call which I got, and I mean, you live right there.
I can't comment on a phone call, but I.
No, but I mean, in the situation.
Nobody likes the construction and disruption to their lives. Everything I do, I'm rerouted. I drove through my front yard to get out of my own property today because they were right in my driveway. I could have sat there, waited 20 minutes, let them put a steel plate down, which they would have done, or it took me two minutes to go through my front yard to my other lot. So, I got out that way.
It's a big inconvenience up there.
Yeah, but it's supposed to be done 20 years ago.
Right.
I have a guy's name and number, that's, he's overseeing the project, I don't have it with me, I can email to the Board member.
If you would, that would be great.
Yeah.
So, because I didn't even have that, I know that you're right there, and the person I talked to, they're very upset, because they were in it, driving, and at that particular time, trying to get home and et cetera, and just as you said, he can't even get into his own driveway, things of that nature. And I get it with construction, there are certain things, but what I was taking from the conversation is, they're not living up to the standards of what they should be doing when you are doing that type of work and trying to also allow the residents to be able to get in and out of their own property.
That's not true.
Not at all.
They will relatively move for you. They just had a nine-feet hole deep in front of my driveway.
Okay.
Can't drive through the hole, so I would have to wait for them to go get the steel plate and bring it over. Again, 20 minutes later, I would be maybe late to my appointment, maybe just disgusted. I took the easy way out, my wife took the easy way out, we both drove through our front yard. The first time won't be the last time, I'm okay with that.
Okay. I drove down from the north, clear down to Bytem's house, I don't think I was quite, yeah, I was through your house, and it is rough, but they were very congenial, I told them who I was and what I was doing, and they, they just said, if there's any problems, let them know, and they can move, they can get a plate or something.
Is it the contractor or the town?
It's the contractor.
So, yeah.
Is it the contractor or the county, Tim?
It's a county sanitary engineer project on a county road.
But it's the contractor who's.
Yeah, the county contracts it out.
Oh, yeah.
And they have a county guy there every day.
Well, I want to thank you, because I've only talked to two people in regards to that as far as issues, so I appreciate that. So, that's all I have. Mr. Blevins, do you have anything?
Yes, sir. Lot of moving parts in the township right now, so if you can hear my voice or see me on YouTube, or all of you who are kind enough to come out and sit through this and everything, it's important for the next several months in this township to pay attention to what's going on. You have big decisions coming up in November, got a fire levy on, there's two trustees that'll be up for reelection, and a lot of moving parts, and so, if there's anybody that would like to talk or would like to reach out to me, I'm readily available, my cards are there, and my phone number's on the website, Franklin Township's website, and I'm open for discussion at any point in time. So, other than that, thanks for coming out today. I do want to apologize for the meeting, the way it went, the day we closed the firehouse. Basically, it was an embarrassment, the way that whole thing went down. The firehouse, it was closed, and I understand that, but the portrayal of what we look like as we did it was unacceptable, and I was guilty by association. So, that's all I have, sir.
Sure. And, Mr. Mazur, you said you had one more thing?
Well, it's something I can handle with Mr. Mazur separately.
So, at this time, I'm going to open the floor for any quick questions in regards to anything pertaining to this past meeting. Yes?
Okay, so, I have a question. Is Lindsey getting paid now?
I believe that she has not been paid, as far as I'm aware of.
Okay. Second question is, the audit that this resolution was about, is it to pay the misdoings that were found in the audit?
I can tell you that there, discussion has had no such discussion regards of paying anything to anybody.
No, I mean, is the general fund paying?
Again.
The difference in the audit?
Again, at this point, until the audit's out, the Board has never taken a position in paying anything in regards to what the audit says or does not say.
Okay, second or third thing. Why is Robin Watkins still paying a debt that her, she was authorized to work that overtime? She doesn't fall, she did not, at that time, fall under the rule of the trustees, she fell under the rule of fiscal office, which is two separate entities.
I can't answer that.
That's a special units investigation, I believe.
I mean, you guys have the power to forgive her of that, just like you do with the audit.
I don't think we do.
You do.
That I don't know.
You should talk to the attorneys.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
It's actually not on the agenda, but Mike just brought up, there's a fire levy on the ballot in November.
There will be.
I'm sorry?
There will be. I'm sorry, I guess.
Okay, so, has been no decisions made, no discussion on what the amount's going to be, how the wording is going to play out, any of that?
That kind of stuff is what I was trying to get to, Tim, I'm sorry, that there will have to be, it's, there's no choice about it. If we don't put one on, we don't have a fire, we don't have a fire department anywhere.
So, you have, I was hoping the fire chief was going to be here, obviously, it's one of the reasons I came. You have a budget for 2025, and that, at the end of 2025, all the levies that are on the ballot, that are remaining are permanent ones.
Three of them.
And do you know how many men that, those three permanent levies will cover?
First of all, I want to verify something, is it three or two that'll be on?
It's three.
It is three?
Really is one.
Yeah, okay, so, what the fire chief told me was, and I asked that question, is if we do not get another levy passed?
Yes.
That there'll be 12 men, four on a shift.
Okay.
There's no money in the budget for a chief, and there would be no money to maintain equipment.
Right.
Is that your understanding? And that's where we're at. And so, as soon as that happens, Tim?
Yeah.
How much do you think Columbus is going to want to reciprocate when we can do nothing at all for them, then?
They're not reciprocating now.
Exactly.
They are.
They're not trading funds.
No, but I mean, as far as runs.
Right.
I'm trying to say to you, do you think Columbus is going to continue to run in the Franklin Township when they're going to be receiving no reciprocation from us?
Let me flip that on you.
So, gentlemen, if I can.
Yes.
If we could save this so when the, because this wasn't what we talked on the agenda today, if we could save this so when the chief is here, if you're able to be here as well, and then we'll have a better idea of what we're going to talk about for our budget, that would be fair for all parties involved. Would that be, is that a good question?
I'm fine to have, I'm good to have the conversation afterwards, Tim, I'll answer your questions.
Well, there's, don't take this as a slide, but I don't think anybody's going to give me answers that I think should be.
Is there any other questions? Here and then, we adjourn approximately 1:54.
Can you get by?
Yeah.
Oh, this is Max.